Question to order, clerk please call the roll.
Person Whitman.
Excused. He's excused also.
Here, one more.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
So we have a few items on the work session, I think I'll just go direct to city manager, Mr. Pastu, if you could start, please.
First item I'd like to start off with is discussion of the Lake Erie Transit City Hall lease and floor plan. I think if the clerk could provide, excuse me, a visual of the proposed floor plan. Obviously, discussion's been going on for quite some time now. We've received all of the comments that we need from LET, their attorneys, and I think even SMART, the regional transit system that would be a funding agent for it. So we're down to the point now where I think we're ready to kind of hone in on the floor plan for this project. I know probably, I want to say last spring when we discussed it, we were looking at a plan that was probably carrying over into the, in fact, I know it was, carrying into the cashier's area at the treasurer's office. And based on the feedback that we had, and certainly discussion with Lake Erie Transit and their personnel, that they were comfortable if we just used the existing footprint of where the old credit union was. So I think the easiest thing to say when you look at this revision is that, I may ask Mr. Lewis to come up to the podium and kind of walk through a little bit of it, I know you have it in front of you as well, but it's essentially the same footprint that we have currently with the hallway where the treasurer's cashier area is, and then also just using the former credit union footprint for the Lake Erie Transit center officer. Patrick?
My mic on. Honorable mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. Yes, as Mr. Pastu pointed out, the most critical thing here, which was we took the feedback, was see if we can get this to fit within the existing footprint. And that's advantageous from both a construction standpoint, because you're not tearing up our lobby again here, but that you, it should drive the cost down a little bit, too. And that was, there were also some other access issues as far as if that hallway were to go away, how there would be access taken to the clerk treasurer's office. So what, the major modifications, which I know are going back nine months, but the major highlights are, the bathrooms have shrunk down in size a little bit. I think they took away, I think we ended up taking away one of the stalls in each of the bathrooms. And I think the men's has one stall and one urinal, and two sinks in each one of those. So those will be, those will be free open, so there won't be any closing doors on those, which was important to the LET management to be able to kind of monitor by sound if there's anything going on there, if there's any, any things that shouldn't be happening in there. They still retain an office in there, which would be, they could, for whatever purposes they'd like to use that. And of course, as we mentioned before, it will have its own exterior entrance, and that will be there, I don't really have a clicker here, but it'll be on the left-hand side there, where you can see sort of that lighter gray. That's the, that'll be the new, a new concrete walkway that will go from the plaza level up to First Street. And so there'll be an individual locking door there, so it's basically a self-contained module, if you will, which has the advantages of being able to stay open later when City Hall is not open, and for events. And I know that, I haven't read the lease agreement myself yet, but I believe that the way we had that structured is there'll be certain times when we have certain events downtown that we will be able to open that up as a restroom facility for people, for events in the square and things like that, bigger city events, so, without having to open the whole building. So the ATM that was there, I think there was a condition of the, I don't remember if that was a condition of the credit union lease, that we had to leave an ATM in there. That will be sort of in the lower right-hand corner there. Can't, probably can't quite see it, says ATM, but there's an individual door from the City Hall lobby, as well as, which would be a service access to it. And then the ATM would face out into the courtyard. So there wouldn't be access to the ATM from the inside of City Hall, you'd have to go to the outside. There's a janitor's closet in there for LET to have their supplies. We've got, looks like five benches, I think, and those can be reconfigured. I don't think that seating is set in stone. I think you could have chairs, you could have benches, but that's just to kind of graphically show the space that we would have. Kind of think what other highlights we have there. So essentially, everything at City Hall is going to look, from the interior is going to look like it does now. All the hallways are the same, all the doorways are the same, the counters of clerk treasurer's office are the same. It will just be, that area that was enclosed by the credit union will now be LET with its own individual entrance on the outside. And they do have monitors inside that will be able to show when buses are arriving, so those will be, those will have cameras out to the street, so you'll be able to see when your bus has arrived. And I think there'll be some video boards that will also have the route status and things like that. So those are the, those are the highlights, and unfortunately, I really appreciate working with Mark Jagazinski and Kohler Architects to get a footprint that we think we're pretty confident meets everyone's needs here. So, Mr. Pastu, have I missed anything?
If there are any questions for Mr. Lewis before we go on, talk a little bit about the lease? Ending with the floor plan? Okay. We did, and we didn't include it with this presentation, but also, we don't anticipate any site changes from what was initially presented. If you recall, there was some changes in the flow coming off of First Street into the plaza area, but we didn't anticipate that that would result in any changes. The focus clearly, based on the comments that we had from council several months ago, was the floor plan and how that was to be used. So as you go into looking at the lease, I just, you know, put a copy in front of you. There's really only, I think, two aspects that we'll probably have to refine between, you know, the two administrations. One is the $6,000 payment that we had talked about, that being for some of the, in essence, if you will, prorated share of the other site maintenance, clearing of sidewalks, landscape improvements, those type of things that we're going to provide for the City Hall site, even though most of it's pretty hard, if you will, but it still is ongoing. And then the other part of it is, is if you turn to page five at the top, you'll see a little bit where I chicken scratched and kind of had rewritten this last Friday, kind of on the fly. I'm not sure I like it, I, some of the wording, but, but the essence of it is, is the understanding is that if we have events in the downtown, you know, Lake Erie Transit's going to be operating from, on Saturdays, from 9:00 AM to, I believe, 5:30, and it's available for any of the public to use the restrooms during those events. But we also said, you know, maybe the best thing to do is allow for an allowance. We are, on Sundays, if we have events, or holidays, like Labor Day, we would be able to keep that open for a period of time. And then I included five allowances for extending hours, say, for example, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock on a Saturday, if there's an extended event going on that evening, whether it's a concert, you know, or some event over at Loranger Square, Loranger Square, that, that may be going on there. So those are the two items that we probably still need to refine between city administration and Lake Erie Transit administration. But beyond that, I think all of the other details, we've pretty well are very comfortable with. Our legal representatives for both have went and reviewed it, and so those are the only two items. We can fine tune that if council is fine with me bringing this forward for your consideration to approve, more than likely at the next meeting.
So I'll see if there's any questions from council. Revisions pending, of course, as stated, and we'll get a final copy at the next opportunity. I see none, no comments?
Again, just to reinforce, the entire cost of the project would be incurred by, you know, Lake Erie Transfer for, Transit for making a transformation of that property. But we do think it would be beneficial, certainly to the patrons of LET, but also, you know, I think change some of the dynamic that we have here in City Hall. So if there's no other comments, we'll put it back on, more than likely, the next agenda for council's consideration.
Sounds good. I appreciate all the time and effort put in this, and I, as I mentioned, the city manager on my way in this morning, and I drove by the outside shell as the people were standing there within that little container area in the temperatures that we're here. So made me think about this speed on tonight, so thank you.
The next item I wanted to chit chat is a follow-up from our last council meeting. Council member Ico Angeli had made mention of renaming Labor Park in light of our conversation with Mr. Mark Russell for the park redesign. And, you know, as I had mentioned at the council meeting, certainly with Mr. Ico Angeli's recommendation, but Mayor Clark had also had conversations with me prior to that, that, you know, this may be the time to have a conversation about renaming the park with this significant improvement that will be going forward. So in the context of some of this discussion, Jeff Green with Community Development, the director, had brought to our attention earlier in 2018, a monument policy that came up there. We kind of liked, from a staff standpoint, the structure of it, and we thought, you know, this could probably be applicable if you were going to look at the renaming of a park or a city facility to put some of these general guidelines in it. And so, having said that, while we have one, you know, name out there for consideration, you know, how would the, you know, the city council prefer to go forward with it? This is certainly something within the purview of the city council to make that determination. If you look down there at the bottom of the first page, you can see, you know, you may consider an advisory board. Who would be comprised of that advisory board? Should there be a council member, or a plural with that, and how you would go about, and a lot of the details also, I think, are very good in identifying the various considerations, although primarily adopted for monuments. What are the considerations that you would take into account that are pertinent for, you know, the renaming of any, or the naming of any facility, or park, or monument? So I throw that out there for discussion. You know, I'll offer up Mr. Green if there was any desire to carry this forward, to help facilitate some of that. And I'm sure you agree, you appreciate that, right? But anyways, I throw it out there because, you know, this thing, we probably need to have the discussion as to how to proceed with the consideration that was mentioned last meeting.
Thank you, Vince. And as Mr. Pastu and I spoke, and we talked about the, I had mentioned a policy, it was about a monument policy, but we have talked about other opportunities that might be presented to the council in the future regarding naming, whether that be a park or otherwise. And so as we talk, we appreciate the work that Mr. Green did just to get this to us here today, to take with us, to review, look at that. And it talks about the ways in which recommendations can come either from the council, staff, and the community. And I think this was a timing with the comment at the last meeting about that. I think there's, and as Vince said, I did receive calls months ago, and somebody came to visit with me as well, because they knew that there was talk about the transformation of the park. Another aspect I think is always important is, you have to, before you rename something, you really have to do the work to find out why it was named in the fashion in which it was, and how that takes into consideration as well. Because it's easy to sometimes think about that. We had, I think, a while ago, a street name was somebody wanted, for a good reason, and a good cause, and a person. But then you think about why it was named that, and go back and find it dates back to families that were here during, back from the Civil War days. So you just, you make sure we do all our diligence, but this is a good start, is just a review. But I also think that we can come back and offer your, some refinement there as well. Kelly, I think you had a question, and then we'll go from there. And before I say anything further, Mark, thanks for being here this evening. Very much appreciate, Lake Erie Transit.
Yeah, your honor, I wanted to talk about the suggestion that John made as well, because to the mayor's point, some of the history I've been trying to track down, well, how did it become Labor Park? Because it's always been Labor Park as long as I can remember. Of course, it wasn't always treated as a park. It was just a strip of land, and I think at some point, the sign and maybe a bench. Since I've been on the council, I've tried to get Parks and Recs to treat it more of a park, hence we had the tot lot one year. Hopefully, we can get that back. And Parks and Recs puts picnic tables and trash receptacles there now. So you see people use it more as a park now. But getting back to how it became Labor Park, the, our local labor organizations petitioned the council at that time. And I've tried to research when, the best I can come up with is 25 to 30 years ago, they petitioned the council, and the council voted unanimously, unanimously to name it Labor Park. And while we do have a lot of respect for Miano and the Miano name, especially in the Orchard neighborhood, labor is very active in that area, always has been, and, and they continue to be very active in the area. Some of the things, the cultivate community, where we just did facade treatments on 16 different homes. They're active throughout the county, but especially in that neighborhood. And I think for that reason, I would like to keep the name as Labor Park. Again, we have food drives there, four or five food drives a year there in the parking lot. There's lots of things that labor is involved in around that park, supporting the community gardens and different things. So I would like to keep the name Labor Park. I just wanted to put that out there to the council.
Other comments? Or, go ahead, Andrew, and then we'll go back.
I guess I just wanted to echo Councilwoman Vining's sentiments, as well as the mayor's own regarding this issue, in that when you're naming something, certainly that should be reviewed and looked at, but when you're renaming something, I think that that carries a higher level of scrutiny in recognizing the historical reasons why that was, you know, it was a decision to do that in the first place. And then to go back on it later and say, oh, well, it's been 20 years, no one remembers anymore, so we'll just, you know, take that vacancy in memory and fill it in with something newer. I think that, I don't know that that's the most appropriate way of going about it. I did have a procedural question on section 10 of the naming and monument policy. When it talks about application fees, it says the council can make recommendations, as well as advisory boards and groups of residents. Are the application fees due in any circumstance? I didn't see a section detailing where or when those were due, or whether, or whether, if it came from an advisory committee, or, you know, Councilman Ico Angeli's recommendation as of the last work session, if he, if he owes a $500 check to City Council along with the motion. So just a procedural question as to how that would work.
I can take a shot at it. The context of it is, if there is a, say, for example, private individual making an application, certainly in the context of what would happen if you consider, for example, a land use type of development, there is going to be some review time associated with it, and I think it would cover this cost. It's certainly not out of line with doing the escrow account, which we've used for building, as well as some planning projects as well. So it's got kind of the, the context of this policy is in the, in, in line with, you know, how we handle land use related items, and so. But it's also, I think, contemplating whether this was a private request rather than anything public.
I guess I might follow up to that. I think about, as this policy was started, it was a monument policy, and I could see on a monument, because some of that site plan and some of the determinations of the work that were required from a staff versus a naming policy, it's really taken an area, and it doesn't take the same work, I don't think, as naming, because you're not doing some of the planning that needs to be done. You still have to conduct the, by this, again, first draft here, some of the ways in which people can make the request. And I think it, rightfully so, gets to the department to be vetted first. I don't know that that takes the first phase. I'm talking about when you talk, talking about a monument. Maybe that's things we'll have to discuss through, monument versus naming. That may be something, a bit of a difference when I think about some of the upfront escrow or fees that may be requested. So I think we'll have to talk that through. That's a good question, though. Andrew, do you have further?
Well, just that if that's the intention of the policy, that it be enumerated in the policy?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a good question. Brian, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I think that Labor Park should rena, rebe, rena, remain named Labor Park. And if we want to offer up maybe a plaque or a monument in honor of Mayor Mignano, I think that may be appropriate for that park. But I think it's been Labor Park for forever, and to rename it, I think, would be maybe detrimental to our, the people that actually brought it about. So a plaque or a monument, I think, would be appropriate in honor of Mayor Mignano. I just don't think naming it in his name would be appropriate. Just my opinion.
Thanks.
Michelle? I'm coming back.
So I went back even farther and looked back at Labor Park, and to me, I think it should stay the same as well. The Labor Park, to me, represents the heritage and the history of that neighborhood, and the people that moved to our community in Monroe back to the industrial era. And there's a lot that went on in that whole community, and I think these people shaped the grassroots of our city. So let's respect the history and our heritage, and keep the neighborhood the way it is, and still call it Labor Park.
Okay. So I'll follow up to Brian's comment as well, thank you, Michelle, is, you know, you think about when you say, well, we'll name this or add this, one of the criteria that's in here, granted, this is the first time, you know, it's been passed out, and we are looking for input back from council, because even though it may stay as is, as appears the council's, at least where they're stating now, still looking at this policy and revising it as a naming and monument policy, I think is probably appropriate this time, because we do have others that have come to City Hall, and just, it's not, it's more of a timing issue than it is a presentation at this point. But one of the items that's in here that I kind of forgot about, as I look, re-look, look through the monument side, it says if, if there's an existing location name for the, for a person that's being recommended for another one, that should be taken into consideration, that it's already in that fashion. And our industrial park is the Sam Mignano Industrial Park, which is a commercial corridor. So that, that would be a consideration as well, when we talk about adding something to a location. So these are, this is really good conversation, I appreciate the input. But I think this may come back, just in a revision at some point, just for input, even if it's not in fashion. And what I'll do as well is a name or two that's come up over the months, I just kind of held on as we move forward. I'll let that be known to council as well. So you know what some members of our community are also thinking, maybe if this isn't the location or the site, but something that comes up in the future, and we keep that as kind of a knowledge for ourselves. Is there's other questions for Mr. Pastu at this time? Please feel free to send back thoughts on this into Mr. Green and Mr. Pastu, that way we can maybe come up with something in the, in the discussion down the road of a update to a policy that probably time to do. Mr. Pastu, anything further? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item. Thank you.
Excuse me. Next item, I, in an update I had provided to City Council, that we had property owners, excuse me, a state of, of four parcels, that, two of them fronting Peters, two of them fronting Bayview, where the family was inquiring whether the city would be interested in purchasing these parcels. There is a home on the, that's just on Peter Street, I think it's 1624 is the address. There's a couple of accessory buildings on it, but three of the parcels are vacant, and fairly small in their size. And as I mentioned, I'd put it out to City Council to see what interest there would be. I think the purchase price they offered us was a little over $34,000, which is double whatever the SEV was for those four parcels. And so, you know, I do see there's a certain merit of acquiring an assembled property, particularly since this one is, you know, somewhat close proximity to the port, but also, we own the, I was thinking there was more parcels, but we just own the one at the corner, corner of Peters and Glenwood in that same block. I was thinking we had two other ones there, but it's just the single corner lot that we have. So I throw that out there, because if there is interest in pursuing it, then, you know, we come back with a plan to pay for it, how to pay for it, and then ultimately would require a formal action on the part of City Council. We just wanted to see what interest. If not, my sense of is, they'd put it on the market and see what, would come from there, so.
Let's have a couple of questions, and I'll see where council's at. Is there a timeline that the current owner is looking at?
You know, a month ago, I think. But, you know, clearly, Mr. Cochran had conveyed to him, we've got a process, we'll put it before the City Council on an update, put it on a work session, and if there is the interest in it, then they would follow up at a future meeting to authorize the purchase if that was the case. So they under, they've been informed of how we handle these type of things, but, you know, we're following essentially what we told them we were going to do, so.
Very good. I, we'll see where council is thought in this. If, if there was interest, I, I think coming back with a, I'll say not intended purpose, but what potentials would be. I know that you have, I think we was at our work session, talked about opportunities in infill as well, development, but there's also the port relation as well. So I think Brian has a question.
Yeah, I do. Is there any way we can get an aerial view of that, of that property?
We could pull up the GIS. Where'd Patrick go? What's that? If you could just get on our GIS system.
Just give us a bit of what we're looking at.
Yeah, okay. I think the other thing with it's important, too, and I probably should have went into a little more detail with it, is while you see four lots, the frontage on it, the individual lots themselves would be non-conforming. I think they are under 40 feet, and so therefore, to get a conforming lot, either on Peters and/or Bayview there, that you would have to basically use one of the, you know, the two lots combined to get a family, a single family home on the, on the site. So while it looks like there's four parcels, there's really, you got to combine them to make it work.
Is there, as Mr. Sell brings that up?
1624.
Is there other, any other questions or comments right now for Mr. Pastu? Kelly?
Is that the area right there across the street from my house? Because, you know, I'm terrible at reading maps. But, you know, you have those two huge trees on that property, that every time the wind blows, you get these huge branches. I've been trying to get forestry to say it's dead and cut it down. It has to be 70% dead, I guess, for the city to get involved. Also, that, all of those lots, if, if these are the lots I'm thinking of, they flood tremendously. I don't, I think I've sent you, sent you pictures. So I don't know what, you said, if we made them conforming, would we be thinking about putting housing there?
Well, that's what it's zoned for, is single family residential, and if you were, anybody was to acquire it, they essentially would be able to get one lot on, on Bayview.
That, that really floods heavily there. Yeah. I think I've sent Patrick pictures. So you know, when that east wind blows, I don't know how we would get around that.
That is where the dip in the road is, or in Bayview. Mr. Sell, can you put it up? So it's, um...
Satellite?
Thank you, satellite.
You mean as the layer?
I think it's one of the layers there, or, there you go.
You want this one?
Yep, yep, that'd be great.
That's perfect, thank you.
Blow it up a little bit, focus in on it a little bit more. So if you could see there that on 1628, you'll see an accessory structure just outside of that parcel, and there's another accessory structure just behind it. But the 1625, 1627 Bayview are essentially vacant parcels, and that's what Councilmember Vining is commenting on, that that area does flood. And we've seen it, particularly when we get the east winds coming off, off the lake there, so.
Your honor. Brian?
Yeah, just looking at what I see here, it looks primarily residential. I don't see us being any benefit to the, to the port, and not necessarily to the city as well. Not saying it's bad property, just saying that it's, it's something that possibly, that we don't want to get into, the real estate business of buying and selling property. So I don't really see a good use for the city here. And I would probably be swayed to say no on the purchase. I know Mr. C. I know Mr. C personally, and I'm grateful for his offer to the city, but I just don't think it's something that the, the city could find any benefit from.
If there's any other comments. So, I think, I'll just say if this council has other comments, they can form along, but I'm not seeing where there's a great interest in.
No.
It has some deficiencies. If, if it was to, the ownership was to be retained by the, well, the current owners, they would have a challenge to sell, other than, as you said, combining the lots into one that would be conforming, so.
Yeah, it'd have to be a Bayview infill.
Yeah.
Peters just is too narrow.
Let me ask another question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Is this something that they can combine the lots through us or with help from us?
Well, that is, you know, we've done this for a few of the lots that we've got through the treasures, county treasurer, and we've combined some lots before, and have actually got a couple more, I think, going before the planning commissioner and have it reviewed by the assessor. So, we make sure that we're not creating non-conformings. But I do think consolidating it into a single lot's probably what needs to, to happen for a residential unit to be developed on Bayview there.
Michelle?
So, 1636 and 1631 are still residents?
Yes, they are.
Currently livable residents. Then I agree with Brian.
Okay.
Well, if there's no interest, that's perfectly fine, too.
Sure.
We promise.
That's why you bring it forward.
Yep, exactly. And just, which, but now that we've brought up where the trees that we're talking about, Miss Vining?
I think they're on the right, they're the other lots to the east, 1633.
Okay.
Is, and, yeah, I was, I should pull the map, if you can see this.
All right.
It's to the other side of that residence.
All right.
Very close.
All right, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Sell. Thanks, Michelle. Mr. Pastu, next item.
Excuse me. Next item is quarterly budget update. We've had some discussion about providing this for the City Council. Mr. Sell gave us a, an update for our major operating funds, general fund, major, local street, refuse fund, building fund, water sewer. By and large, you know, it's a six-month halfway through the fiscal year. Things are looking, you know, nothing, no horrible variance. I'm looking ahead to see if there's anything of great concern. It was actually nice to see it, that so far, things are progressing as anticipated. But this gives the City Council a sense, you know, if we provide these quarterly, where things are at. Certainly, we've started the budget process, and, and just the timing of it, you'll have a, by the end of March, we'll have a refined quarterly update for you, year-to-date actuals, but also projected, pretty good projection for the remainder of the fiscal year, where we're going to end up when we present the upcoming budget for, for City Council. But by and large, nothing, no great, no great variances to cause alarm, so. In fact, if anything, I was, hadn't looked at it, you know, last year, we made some changes to our, our building fund with some of the fees, and, and at that point, it was running pretty close to being a negative fund balance. And I see that so far, year-to-date, the revenues have exceeded the operating expenses. But if you recall, we hadn't really done anything for almost 11 years. So, I think, you know, it's paying the dividends that it is being financially sustainable in itself, the, the building department and the fees that they're generating, so.
Any questions from Mr. Pastu on the budget update? Very well. I'm sorry, Andrew.
There we go. Since you brought up the building inspections, have we begun executing rental inspections upon point of sale?
We have not.
Okay.
You know, I think when we were, oops, I'm sorry. When we were talking about it at our goal-setting session, is that now we have all of the personnel in place, that we're ready to start pursuing that with, I think, and if I recall, in March, I was going to provide you with a plan to, how to go about implementing that. So, part of it's, for those that were still on the council, and it just happened as I was coming on board in 2016, there's certainly an outreach effort that needs to take place with the real estate community and how these things will handle, what are the standards by which we're going to handle the review, how, who will do it, how do you schedule them, those type of things. So, you know, we'll come back with a full-blown implementation plan for that here in March, probably no later than April, so. But we have the staff now structured to be able to deliver, I think, so.
Thank you.
Other items that might be related to the budget or clients? Okay, Vince?
Well, we also have, if there's anything on the regular agenda tonight, I'm also kind of waiting for Mr. Cochran to come back from his meeting with the county commissioners and with the Spire Development Group. They're going to be here to, to go through and answer a lot of the questions, I think, that have been raised regarding their rent structure, the, you know, how you'd go about really defining what low-income housing is and how it would affect this project in the broader community. And so, you know, I think unless there's anything else, if there's anything on the regular agenda that council may wish to discuss, and if I could back up here, because we're not ready to approve the Spire Development Plan, we, I will ask you, City Council, to have that item removed from City Council action. We've had that conversation with the Spire Development Group, and, and we know there's some details that we still need to iron out regarding that purchase agreement, and, and we can still fit it within, I think, a very, very tight timeline for them to get their application in before the Michigan Housing Development Authority. But I think that at that point, we're not ready for, for any kind of action on the part of council tonight for that.
Well, I think it's a good place to start. I know that you sent council that message last Friday in an email that we still had some work and some discussion to do regarding the Spire Development. And I know Mark and them will be here soon to kind of give us an update, so we give us additional information as we think about this in the future. But from a procedural standpoint, I'm looking to Clerk Chair Lavoy and Mr. Buds, you're asking that it be removed from the agenda? Would that mean that at the beginning of the meeting for amending the agenda, is that what we're looking at? I see two yeses here. Okay, so, just keep that in mind for council as we start the, the regular meeting, and they'll have to do a motion at that point to remove item 2292. So, that's, I just want to make sure you understand this, it came forward. Knowing that, I think the idea is to come back at a future timeframe for discussion, depending on how this evening's discussion goes and how the Spire Development and city administration of staff move forward. So, I'll see if there's any comments in the council on any agenda items. I know it's not a lengthy agenda item, but there are a couple items here, of course, the public hearing on the, coming up on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but also the proposed ordinance, which will be set in a public hearing next time. I do have, I'll first see if there's questions for you from council. I just wanted to review the appointments on an item because, you know, there's been some, I've received some inquiries there prior to tonight, and just want to kind of review not only the appointments that are on the resolution, but where I'm at with some others, because it, it ties to our last meeting. And so, I may, I'll just start there, and we'll see what council says. So, you'll see there's a variety of items, but I just want to review that as we get into the, one item was the Reverey and Heritage Quarterly, Quarter Advisory Commission, which is a new commission. I did send out an email with some background on, on each of them members, because I'm not sure of council's knowledge of, of them, to give you a background of why those recommendations are there. One thing I neglected to do on this resolution was the council liaison consideration. I'll bring that at the next meeting. And I also want to talk about the Citizens Planning Commission. As we adopted the ordinance last meeting, going from nine to seven persons, there were two members that terms either came to an end or had not had a reappointment, will be falling from the Citizens Planning Commission. I've talked to both of those members. But it's still, and, and Mr., you'll see there is a recommendation on there. I neglected to see that his term expired this year. I looked at it and it said 20, but that was the person above him. So, that's why Mr. Rennie shows on for something that should have been added to the last meeting. So, there's still a vacancy in the fourth precinct, and I continue to have a, I would say a possible, but always thinking of that as people may know those living in the precinct four, if they have an interest to serve. The last item on the planning commission is, is set by the new ordinance, is the seventh person is kind of an at-large position. So, I just want to give council an update. I did attend all the boards and commissions. Well, couldn't get to the port, but I know the message was forwarded from personnel there and chairperson. I did attend the various boards and commissions to advise of this change, but also the opportunity for service, because councils in the ordinance wanted to bring somebody from one of the other boards and commission, kind of a, kind of a partnership from another board. I do have a, I do have received a couple interested persons serving on other boards. I still have a couple phone calls to make, and then I'll hopefully have that, at least the at-large position at the next meeting, and then keep working on the fourth. So, I just want to give that update, where it's at and why another planning commission member came forward. It's, it's, his term has, is concluding here at the end of this month, and he had an interest to serve again, so. I don't know if there's any questions on any of the nominations we can get in that at this meeting as well, my recommendations for appointment. Mark's not here yet.
Do you want to contemplate a short recess until he appears?
Yeah, we can do that, because I'll see first if there's other inquiries from the council on anything regarding the agenda, or maybe, well, I guess, item, as, as the work session says, or other items. I did have a question that I know that is, is coming up, because it was at the planning commission's review as well, on the capital improvements project. Will there be a timeline for that or discussion or presentation for council? I know we have.
Yep. Actually, I was planning on having that tonight for the Citizens Planning Commission, as well as the, the City Council, of kind of a similar presentation that we did last year. I want to say, I can't remember if it was in December or January, but like early January. But I held off because we were actually looking at doing the lazy boy subarea plan presentation tonight as well, and we held back on that for a couple of different look-sees that we wanted to go a little bit further detail, so. But I think I can assure you, at the February 4th meeting, we'll have a presentation for the City Council, as well as an invite to the Citizens Planning Commission to, to go through the, the capital improvements program for the upcoming year, as well as the next five years. So, that was, I think, presented to them at their last meeting, last week ago, Monday, so.
Very good. Brian?
Yeah, just real quickly, and maybe this is for Mr. Green, regarding the CIP for the CPC, did they approve of anything as of yet? Okay. What, what did they approve of, I guess, is my question.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeffrey Green, Director of Community Development. The Citizens Planning Commission recommended approval of the CIP budget as presented at their last meeting, and that letter of transmission will be coming to City Council probably within the next week.
Okay, is there, did they have a lot of time to review it? I'm just, just asking, because I, I've talked with a few people from the Citizens Planning Commission, they, they said it was kind of presented to them, kind of last-minute type thing, and I just like to make sure that they have the proper time to really look it over and check it over and see if they see anything. That's, that's just another set of eyes for us, so.
They had an opportunity to review it ahead of time. We sent out electronic version. We also had a hard copy version for the meeting, and what we indicated to them from the staff was that they have the ability, if they want to postpone until a later date, to review that and take more time to review it, they could. The idea is that we would either need to be meeting at the end of this month or early in February, between the work session, which would be presented here to council, and the commission, or, and, and I should say, the public hearing, which is the third week of February. So, in that timeframe, we give them those options. They made a decision that they were ready to approve it at that, at the meeting last week.
Seeing how we're going to discuss it together with the City Council, is it possible that they could rescind on some of that motion or not?
That would take formal action by the commission, so we would have to have a meeting in order for them to go back and rescind that.
Well, seeing how, seeing how we're going to be together as a CPC and City Council, is it possible that they could do it within that meeting, that we have that session?
Well, I'm going to look at Mr. Buds and Mr. Green, they'd have to post the meeting for action.
It'd have to be an official meeting of the Citizens Planning Commission for them to take action. But evidently, they, we didn't hear any comments or any, any feedback on the budget, and again, as presented was the motion that was made.
Vince, go ahead and give.
Yeah, and in many ways, most of the projects were just to carry forward from, you know, as obviously we adopt a multi-year capital improvements program, and, and these projects were basically, I think, carry forwards from what we had previously identified last year, you know, is falling into the program year. I think the only exception I can think of, maybe the North Custer was one where we pushed that up a little bit quicker. But aside from that, all of them were, I think it's about all the projects were included in the prior capital improvements programs, and just carrying out the timing of it.
And it was a, it was a pretty straightforward budget, as we indicate. There weren't a lot of projects on this time. In past years, we've had, you know, a whole, a whole herd of projects, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And went through them. But again, the, the commission seemed to feel comfortable at their last meeting of going forward with it, so we, we take direction from them.
Okay. Thank you.
I know we still have some time for, for the conclusion of, before getting ready for the council meeting, so there's no other questions regarding the agenda for administration, Mr. Pastu? Maybe we'll just take a short recess? Is that the right term, Mr. Buds? Okay. So, we can do that, and then just reconvene once the other presenters come here. And the reason they're not here is because they are presenting, I'll just say, companion information to the Monroe County Board, so that's why it's doing. Okay, I think we'll just take a short recess and come back. Okay, we'll just reopen the council work session. Mr. Pastu, I don't know if you have comments? If not, I know Mark Cochran has some introductions for us.
Yep, I'll let Mr. Cochran run it from here.
Very good. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Mark Cochran, Assistant City Manager in Economic Development. Tonight, we've got our Spire Development here to talk about the project that we've had considerable discussion about, whether it be in work sessions or the city goals and objectives. But as you saw in the packet that got sent out last week, we are in discussions with them about possible redevelopment of the existing central fire station site. Appreciate your patience. As we ran across the courtyard, we were meeting with the county board of commissioners to introduce this project to them and a potential partnership with them for the county-owned parking lot at the corner of Wadsworth, Wadsworth and First Street. Got a lot of really good feedback from them, general consensus to move forward with the discussion, which, which we're planning to do. So, I don't, we don't want to go through the entire presentation, because most of what is in here, you've already seen from me before, but certainly, as we go through, and if you have any questions from Scott Harold or Tom Grawalsky, they're both here from Columbus to answer questions tonight. So, I don't know if you want to introduce who Fairfield is and how they figure into the partnership.
Sure. Tom Grawalsky with Spire Development, thank you very much for your time this evening. So, the project would be co-owned and co-developed by Fairfield Homes and, and ourselves, Spire Development. So, Fairfield Homes has been around, it's a third-generation company, Jennifer Gorsuch-Walters, the granddaughter of the founder, is the current president that runs Fairfield Homes. They would be our general contractor and also the property manager. These are all, generally, it's very common to own and manage these properties for a very long time. I don't know that Fairfield has ever sold anything. They currently property-manage about 110 communities and, and own 60 or 70 themselves. Here's a more detailed list. Our architecture firm has an office out of Detroit, but they're headquartered out of Columbus, Bordey and Partners. These are Spire and Fairfield partnered 9% tax credit deals, and where we're at and where we've been awarded deals and are, that are underway. we've been awarded deals and are, that are underway. I think you all know the site that's being considered. This is a rendering of our project that was awarded MISHDA tax credits last year that's being developed in Coldwater. It's on a vacant parking lot in their downtown. I should say an underutilized parking lot in their downtown. So I know there's discussion, there's been discussion about what missing middle means in the context of your plan, certainly, and some folks consider it architecturally missing middle. And then some folks consider it income missing middle in a manner, the, the folks who aren't low enough to qualify to have the government help pay their rent and the folks that aren't high enough to maybe afford to buy the home. I'm happy to dive in as deeply as you all want into the tax credit aspect of this. I know there are a lot of questions. So your, your master plan shows significant demand or notes significant demand for households living downtown. We've commissioned a market study, which would be done, which will be done in a few weeks, actually more like a month or so. And it'll help quantify it in greater detail, but it's, it's very common. I have no doubt that there's going to be ample demand for this type of housing in your community. It's very common to have 10 times the demand of the number of units that are actually being placed in the service. Everything is very high quality. The program's been around since 1986 when President Reagan started it, the tax credit program, and it continues to get more and more regulated. So energy efficiency design is incentivized by MISHDA. So it will be either green or LEED certified or enterprise green certified, which are energy efficiency design metrics. So the residents should have really low utility costs. The, there are also a lot of requirements in the context of these and beyond, just MISHDA requirements, to use Michigan products and to have really long durability of products. So there's no cheap materials that get used on these projects when MISHDA resources are involved. Understandably, the vast majority is 30-year durability products, 20, 30-year warranted products. There's another one of our tax credit developments, and that's just pictures of the interior to give you an idea of what the finishings look like. All new, nice and clean and very durable. Again, this is how we, we think we fit into your master plan. And, but of course, it could be debated and discussed what missing middle means in this context. Coldwater had missing middle, pretty much the exact verbiage in, in their master plan. They understood it to mean the income aspect of, of missing middle and, and also they, their missing middle, they wanted infill development in these underutilized parking lots that they have a plethora of. So they had, had kind of annotated that, and that's exactly the type of development. But they wrote a letter of support in addition to, to, to our application, which certainly helped when MISHDA evaluates a bunch of applications because it's a very competitive process. And in that, they explained that they think tax credit housing helps meet their definition of, of what missing middle is in their community. Here would be the quickest timeline that it would happen under. If we were, could successfully get site control of, of, of your parcel and potentially the county's parcel as well, then we would seek these other approvals prior to April 1st. You can apply twice a year in, to MISHDA and often applications have to apply more than once. We were fortunate and got Coldwater our first time applying, but the, there's an April 1 and an October 1 round. So if we were not to, to not get it this, this April 1st round, should you all support the project and we be able to assemble an application in time, then October 1 is always an option. So in the context of that, if we were to submit an April 1 application, we would find out in July if we got an award and we wouldn't break ground until spring of 2020. So happy to answer questions.
Brian?
Yes. Looking over the property, do you feel that there's enough room and parking for, for parking and development with what that property offers, what you're looking to do?
Sure, well, the, this is currently set up with the 60-foot setbacks that are in the ordinance. And I think the concept is to go through a PUD. And so we would very much like to have more of a zero, zero lot line kind of setback, more walkable, set the building right up close to the sidewalks and then use more of the site for parking. So this is obviously a very preliminary design. It'll be tight with the, with the, without the county land, it would be tight, certainly be tight. And we could, we're, we'd like to develop around 50 units, but that's really where the economics start to get efficient. So anything much further away from that would present problems. But if we have to tweak unit design and make an L-shaped building or whatever to maximize the site, then, then we certainly will.
Do you have any other properties that are adjacent to homes like this would be?
Sure, there, Coldwater has a houses abut in the parking lot. We had to give one of them an access easement through the parking lot to be able to get to his garage because he currently just drives right through the public lot. So we, we can be very, we, we get it. We can be very accommodating to, to people's needs in the immediate adjacent areas.
Actually, I have a few more questions, if you don't mind. How would you say the experiences with the tenants in the other towns? From town to town, obviously it can be different.
Sure.
From Grove City to Coldwater, obviously we're talking about totally different environments.
Yep.
Would you say that they're, I mean, have you done any surveys with your tenants to get their feedback?
Sure, well, these properties with tax credits involved are, are heavily visited by not only, MISHDA will visit it. There's an entity called a syndicator who you could think of sort of as a bond trustee. They're the fiduciary intermediary between the tax credit investor and the project. So they're doing annual inspections, heavily regulated and inspected business, if you will. Of course, resident surveys and things like that are part of that process. The, I, I mean, generally the residents love the housing because it's solving, there's a pretty astonishing number of folks that live in this community already likely who are rent burdened, which just means that they spend more of, more than 30% of their monthly paycheck on housing costs, rent or mortgage and utility bills. And so what the tax credit does is that it, the property will have a restriction on the rents that we can charge. And so it, it will de-rent burden, if you will, the communities that live in it. So now instead of X dollars of disposable income a year, they now have Y dollars and that makes them really happy and they can save for the future to buy a house in the community if they want to permanently settle in, in Monroe. They can even, they can income qualify to live here and they could get promoted or their spouse could start a job. And as long as they don't move out and try to move back in to their unit, then they can earn above those income limits. So it's really a good, you know, well, well-run communities like to have diverse housing stock, everything from the high end to the low end. And this is that, providing that middle sliver, which it's sort of a bell, it's sort of a normal distribution. If you talk to the high and the low end, the bell curve is, is in this middle area. So if you want to talk about the, the amount a household can earn, that was, the county really wanted to dive into that. It all sort of depends on the, the size of the unit that you're renting and the number of people in your household, the number of kids. But a five-person, 70% AMI household would earn, could earn $56,000 a year in this, in the current 18 number, or last year's 18 numbers. They come out every spring and they generally trend up, upward. And everyone down to those smaller households, a young, a young person just out of college who might earn 20, 30,000 dollars a year in an entry level position at one of your major employers. So the, there's a heavy vetting process and screening process, more on the property management level, if that was, was that what you were kind of originally asking?
A little bit, yes.
Yeah, so we do criminal and credit checks. We do, we do income verification. So if they say they have a job that they earn X at, we actually get pay stubs and have to go through that qualification process, send letters to their employers and verify it back from their employers for both. So to make sure they can actually pay their rent and to also make sure they're not lying and they don't earn over. And then we get audited by the IRS and get in trouble. So it's, it's a very intensive pre-leasing process and the eviction process is just like any other development. Go through the county courts and if they don't pay their rent in time, they'll have standard lease provisions in that regard. It's actively managed. So the property manager will, if they see someone living there regularly, their car's parked there, they're always in unit 101 and they're not supposed to be, then they approach that tenant for documentation and, and verification. And then there's eviction protocols for that too. If they say, these are the people who are in our household and then that was a lie and actually Y are in our household.
50 units, approximately, how many stories would you say that would be?
Four stories.
Four stories, okay. And my last question, when you do the building or bidding process, will you consider local vendors to do that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. It's typically most efficient. Our general contractor will be, will be Gorsuch Construction, co-owners in the project. But they'll, they'll bid it out to all, all local subs, pretty much. It's generally not going to be efficient, especially in this market where everyone in the construction business has a lot of work. It's, local is always the best option. The Coldwater project, we are talking to some folks down in Fort Wayne, because it's not far, but kind of Battle Creek down to Fort Wayne, over to Hillsdale, and then of course Coldwater proper. So it'd be a similar approach here, I think.
Great.
Thank you. Other questions? Michelle?
What kind of rent ranges are you proposing for this project?
Rent ranges?
Yes.
So of course, a lot of this is determined by the market analyst, but you know, in, in pre-assessing a market, we're going through an underwriting model and seeing if, if it can work and we know what the maxes are. Then we get utility information and we back in. So the rents that I'll read you are, are after utilities have been taken out and kind of below the, the cap. So it's.
Included in the rent?
Water, sewer and trash is typically paid for by the landlord. So this is assuming that the residents paying their electricity and their heating bills.
Okay.
Whether it's gas or electric. So the three bedrooms right now, we're modeling on the high end of $949 per month and on the low end, $875 a month, in that range. The, the two bedrooms that we're currently modeling, the high end is around $829 a month and the low end is in the 79, 790 range. And then the one-bedroom units are a wider range. On the high end, they're, they're 616 months of, dollars a month in rent. And then we will have some lower tiered one-bedrooms that are more around the $350 a month range.
That would be like a studio type?
Uh, it would still be a one-bedroom, but the, the state, MISHDA doesn't let you put all your rents right up to the max because all those other rents are 60, 70% AMIs. So they want us to mix in some 40, 50, 30% AMI units. So we typically do it in the one-bedroom because it doesn't hurt the math as much, if that makes sense, the revenue potential of the property. So we get some of that stratification in the one-bedrooms.
With the MISHDA tax credit, do they require you to have a certain amount, a certain percentage of low-income housing at all?
Well, it's all, it's all rent restricted housing, which could be called low-income housing. The program itself is called low-income housing tax credit. There are, of course, many flavors to that. Norman Towers used the tax credit as a financing mechanism, albeit that's a seniors restricted property. This is a family restricted property. And they do in their scoring, it's an Excel model where they want you to stratify the levels that you're tiering the rents at. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Diversity is what I'm looking for, so it sounds like it would be a diverse complex.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right. It would all be rent restricted and then it would be diverse at different levels.
See if there's other questions from council. Kelly?
So there would be income restrictions. Basically, I'm asking, you couldn't make over a certain amount of money and qualify to live in this property?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. You could not. So if, if you, it's, it's you and your spouse and one child and you want to rent a two-bedroom and you earn $80,000 a year, you wouldn't be able to qualify to live in the community. So we, we have to verify the amount of income the household moves in upon admittance. And then back to my earlier point, as long as you don't move out, you could get raises or others could start to work and you could start to earn over that level and not have to move out. So it's, it's income eligibility at the initial move in.
As you earn more, would your rent be adjusted to reflect that?
No, it wouldn't actually. It would just be, the rents are only adjusted annually by, by the federal government, you know, it's kind of like an inflation factor. So every, we, we could adjust up. Every year, the rents will go up a little bit across the board, but it won't be for one specific household.
So Mark may be able to answer this question, but with our master plan, is the missing middle income-based or is it housing-based?
No, so when we talk about, with the housing study that the city commissioned, when we talked about missing middle, it was really the style of the house where, when Spire is developed or referring to the missing middle, they're talking about middle-income housing, where it's not high-income housing or low-income housing, but it's at that middle. So I guess for, when we looked at our study in the, the slide that Spire put up, it did talk about that missing middle, which is the number of townhouses or lofts or the four or five-unit developments. But the long and short of it is that the housing study showed we can support 200 new housing units a year. 83% of those are renters. The city's demand is for 67 new rental units per year. So by Spire saying that they're going to come in and develop a 50-unit apartment building in one year, I want to make sure that we understand this isn't precluding anybody else from opening or developing or constructing market rate or other types of rental units downtown. You know, when we talk about a, a two-bedroom loft apartment in downtown that, that's more the executive style, well, we can't support a lot of 1,500 units downtown, but we can support more that are, that are within the, the ranges that Spire is talking about. So I think what's important to think about, and this is what I, what I told the county in, in our presentation over there, is we're trying to attract new businesses downtown. It's that chicken and the egg effect that we're always talking about, right? The businesses want people who are going to support them. The people want to locate where there's businesses. The people want to locate where there's businesses that can support the new residents. So having 50 new units in the, in the downtown area helps develop some of that, that critical mass that we talk about, supporting downtown businesses, but it's very important that we don't price people out of the market. So, by having units that are, that are meeting folks who have, are only spending 30% of their, their income on housing, as Tom mentioned, they can support businesses that are downtown. They can save to buy a new house in the city and put the money away, whereas if they're spending 70% of their income on housing downtown, there's little else that they're going to be able to do. So, I think, you know, talking about the important mix of different rental rates is important, and I think that's a critical balance that city council needs to pay attention to. But again, this doesn't preclude anyone, and this isn't the only development opportunity or site that we have downtown. You know, if we look at the housing study, 67 new units in a year that the, the city can absorb, well, what's going to be the impact the next year? And I think those are the things that we need to stay attuned to. So, does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Other questions from council? I'm looking at Mr. Cochran, but also Mr. Pastu, kind of next steps. First off, thank you for the presentation. It was informative, and it's good to review again, as we did in the last opportunity work session. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Kelly?
Yeah.
Many low-income people have Section 8 or housing choice vouchers. Would those be accepted, or are you your own sort of?
Yeah, they, they could be. It's against the law to discriminate against someone that has a housing choice voucher if they could afford to pay the rent. So, it really comes down to what the payment standards are for the local housing authority, and I know they have different utility allowance calculations they do, but if, if we have a unit, a one-bedroom that's listed for 600 bucks a month, and they have a housing choice voucher that's $625 a month, they, they still have to pass all the screening, but if they were to pass all the screening, then, then we would have to let them rent there. It's, it's, it is totally different from a project-based Section 8 community, which would be where all 50 units have, the project has a contract, and 30% extremely low-income households get on a waiting list and apply to live in that, that development. That's, that's not what this would be. This is more supply and demand if a housing choice voucher comes up, just like if they walked up to a landlord of a local house that, that he was renting out, and they could afford to pay for it. Same sort of rules apply. So yes, we cannot discriminate against them. I would say that one important distinction is that sometimes, and I'm sure you have, I don't know anything about your local housing authority, but sometimes, housing authorities have background screening thresholds that are here, and properties are allowed, a property like this, we could have a background screening that's here, and, and as long as we universally apply this and do not, then we're not being discriminatory. So, so that's an important distinction. Sometimes, folks with a voucher or without a voucher come up, and if they don't pass the screening, then we're not going to lease to them. Or if they have bad, we check landlord references. If they trashed a unit and, and played the eviction game in another, another property, then, you know, we get landlord references, and they would likely be flagged and unable to rent.
Thank you.
So I know we have-
Mr. Mayor, just, Mark brought a really good point about your employers, and, and Ms. Lamore, you know where Grove City is, then?
Yes, Columbus.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a very booming southern suburb where we got a tax credit awarded. Traffic is awful from Main Columbus to Grove City. Mount Carmel Hospital just built a huge hospital there, and they wrote, the hospital wrote a letter of support for the, and all that's being built in Grove City is $400,000 houses. And yet, the vast majority of the workers, the X-ray technicians, the, the entry-level nurses can't afford that, and, and so that, that project was unanimously supported by the city and local employers, because employers have a big problem with turnover when there's not diverse housing stock, and that turnover costs the employers money. So, when you, when you look to attract employers, hopefully, this could be an asset to your community.
Thanks, Tom, because that was good information as well. I know stuff we've chatted in here with the council and with staff about how we move forward in our community, both in housing and employment and business. So, we only have about six minutes for the council meeting, so I'm looking at council if there's any more information. And I appreciate the, being here and providing this information, and thank you, Mark. Vince, anything further before we close?
We did kind of allude that we do have this purchase agreement back before the city council. It will probably be February 4th, I'm thinking, but there's a lot of timeline, too. I mean, they've got to go through a PUD process before the end of March, and so there's a little giddy-up if this project is to proceed, but clearly, the first order of business is going to be the purchase agreement itself.
May I add how the Commissioners decided to proceed forward? So with the county parking lot, they purchased it, and at that time, the Solid Rock Church across the street secured a first right of refusal, and so we have to clear that legal hurdle first. So the county has to order an appraisal on the property and then offer that to Solid Rock Church, and they can either decide to decline or meet that offer, and so we have to go through that, but at the same time, they're prepared to move ahead with that tomorrow, and then also bring this back up for consideration before the county in two weeks.
Very good. Watch the timelines as well as internally with where this may have to be reviewed, whether it be planning commission or others. So, thank you much again. If there's no other comments, we'll close our work session.